Tammy, thank you. Sorry, Tammy, I forgot your name for a second. All set?
Yes.
Okay. North Smithfield Town Council meeting February 21st, 2022. Can you open us with a prayer and pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now he's on vacation. May we roll call, please.
Mr. Burigan? Ms. Hamilton?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Here.
Mr. Ogier?
Here.
Ms. Alves?
Here. Before we start open forum tonight, we're just going to move a few things around. Let's see. We're going to move new business A, discussion by council voter other action regarding a ballot question for replacement or rehabilitation of the existing police station. One discussion with bond council regarding process and timeline for a bond referendum, potential date, town council resolution, enabling legislation from general assembly, ballot language for secretary of state. Ellen?
So Ellen's from the bond council. She's going to be here just to give us a little bit of information and then we can open it up to some questions.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the town council. My name is Ellen Cornow. I am a partner at Savage Law Partners and I am bond counsel for the town of North Smithfield. I think I've been doing this in various different capacities for, since probably 1992, something like that. So, so pretty familiar with your charter, pretty familiar with how you are able to borrow. So, it's my understanding that you have a project for a police station in discussion. I understand that there is a building committee or a building that people that have started, started the process. And you have asked me to discuss the bond, the bond process. So you borrow as a town in two different ways. You, you can borrow under your charter, which gives you the ability to borrow up to 1% of your operating budget in each fiscal year. That's not nearly going to give you nearly enough money for this. So let's just put that aside for, for this particularly. The next way is that is you seek passage of a special bond act from the general assembly, which approval of such act would go to the voters and they would either approve or, or deny your authorization to, to issue bonds. Our general assembly is in session from about January through June of every year. So every year we have to get it in at that, during that time. We try to get bond acts in by April 1 of each year. Not saying, I'm not saying that that's the absolute deadline. People do get bond acts in to the general assembly post April 1, but that's when you don't, you know, you want to be, you want to have, have enough time before the general assembly ends for the year. So, the process is town council resolution authorizing or asking the general assembly for passage of the act. Passage of, the act gets drafted by me, that town council resolution usually gets drafted by me. The act gets submitted by your legislative delegation to the general assembly. They request a bond council letter saying that the, the legislation is in proper form for submission and passage. The bond act gets passed. It either gets signed or becomes effective without the governor's signature at that point. The bond act usually then says that the town council, the bond act will be submitted to the next general or special election as determined by the, the town council. The town council will then set the date for the election. The, the, the bond act itself contains the question to be submitted to the voters. Something, it's something like shall an act passed at the such and such session of the general assembly authorizing bonds in an amount not to exceed X for the purpose of Y be passed? That's, that's, that's the language. Election happens, whether it be special or general, at whatever the election is. There's, there's certain timeframes that the town has to submit the question to the board of elections. Election either gets passed or defeated. If passed, at that point, we come back to the council for another resolution to authorize the issuance of bonds or temporary notes in anticipation of the bonds. And at that point, you have your money for your project. There's certain IRS rules that require you to pass a, what's called an inducement resolution prior to being able to reimburse yourself with proceeds of tax exempt bonds. And we want these bonds to be tax exempt. It saves you money. That language, there's special language for that. We usually put that in the resolution requesting passage of the act. So that way it, it's as soon as possible before. So that if you start spending money, say on preliminary, you know, any types of, of costs at that point, you're able to reimburse yourself. You're able to reimburse the town, the town budget. So, um, so the question is, do you want to, the, the questions that the town council has to decide. What's the project? How much money? Do you want to do a special or general election? And, you know, that's, that's basically it. So, um, is, I guess I can stop here and see if anybody has any questions or if anyone, if I'm missing anything that somebody wants to know.
So, with the ballot question, so you recommend being very specific and just for this project, not to exceed this amount of money. And then what, however, whether it goes yes or no, then it comes back to the council and we could decide if we want to do a full rebuild or just a renovation?
Yeah. So, so I did have some questions previously from, I think, the solicitor about whether or not you could do a ballot question in the alternative. Whether you could do something like, you know, shall the town, one, build a new police station for X amount of money? Two, build a new police, renovate an existing building for a police station for X, for Y amount of money? Or do neither? So, so you'd have questions. While it probably can be done, it is not recommended at all. Question, what I, I would recommend, one question that basically has a maximum dollar amount that gives you the ability to both construct and renovate. And, you know, and then the voters will be able to say yes or no to either of those. If you do alternative questions, you, you, you create a lot of confusion. You create, you know, uncertainty. What if both pass? What if you have 30, 50% on renovation, 50% not, I mean, you're not going to have it exactly, but there's going to be no mandate for you. And it's going to be very confusing and it's very confusing for the voters. Any question that isn't, you, you have to use plain language. Voters are used to seeing the question in the form that I, that I said to you, that I, that I read to you. Anytime there's a deviation from anything like that, that, that's confusing, you have a lot more, there's a lot more possibility of challenge of invalidating the question for any reason and that's not what you want. So you want to be able to have very plain language, not confusing to the voters. And I think it, it might be confusing to the voters when you do questions in the alternative. So.
So I'm confused already. Did I misunderstand? So if we have a question not to exceed amount, that can be used for either a new construction or a renovation?
We could draft it in such a way that it could be used for either a new construction or a renovation.
So, so if the two, if the two amounts are different, say the renovation is, I don't know, let's just pick a number, $500 and the new one is $1,000. How do we know, how do people know what they're voting on and what the impact is going to be to them in their tax bill?
Well, I think that, I think what, they're, they're voting on the maximum amount, but the town council also had, always has the ability to issue less. You don't have to ma, you don't, if, if you're authorized to issue 10 million, you don't have to issue 10 million. You may issue seven, you may issue eight. You know, whatever the project costs. The voters would be voting on the maximum amount. So they, it's not like they would be voting on a lesser amount.
Right. So if they voted down the maximum amount, then we don't have a plan B?
Correct.
Okay, that worries me.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, yeah, right. That, that's actually, that, that would, that is the case.
Yeah, because then we'd have to start all over again and we'll, you know,
Right.
Everybody's accusing everybody of kicking this can down the road as it is. So I'd like to stop the can from rolling. So that would worry me if we have one question not to exceed. I think if people felt it was too expensive for whatever reason, they voted it down, we're stuck. You know?
So what, what do towns normally do in that case? Like if?
So, I mean, different towns, I mean, I do represent several towns. One town I can remember, I think their school ballot went on three or four times before they actually got it passed. It went on for 120 million, didn't pass, went on for, you know, it, it, yeah, it's not ideal. Not ideal.
No, because it's costly to us.
The other, the, the thing, the other thing that I could, that I've seen happen is there's a, there's a bond ballot that's, you know, has the maximum dollar amount, does give you the ability to be flexible in your project, be able to use money, you know, for, for whatever you end up, whatever the town council ends up deciding is being best for the town, whether it be a new, new police station or, or renovation. Sometimes communities put non-binding referendums on there, but it would have to be non-binding. And you could ask whether or not you should build a new police station for X amount of money or renovate an existing building for a police station for X amount of money.
Two questions?
It would be, the bond question would be one and the non-binding referendum would be another. And then, you know, then you could do the new construction, X dollars, renovation, X dollars.
Yeah.
So the main ballot question is still the money?
Still the, still the, the, the project amount, correct.
That's really what's passing. And then below is kind of like a poll.
Right.
We're basically polling people as they, as they say that, what they would prefer to see.
Exactly.
At the same time.
And then how does that work? Which one of them is binding?
Just the down.
If the non-binding is non-binding.
The whole question is non-binding, right.
The whole. Just the dollar amount.
Just the dollar amount.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it's confusing.
Right. Although, although if you had, if you had a non-binding referendum where 75 to 80% of the population voted for renovation at the lower amount. I mean.
Then would then we, would we be required to go out again?
No.
So that.
They got the ballot question.
That, okay.
Because we have, the ballot question would be not to exceed a certain amount. So if the renovation was substantially less, but we have up to this to spend, it's the bond question that's being approved, correct?
Correct.
And then we're just polling people, their opinion on what they would want to see. So we have up to this to spend, but we could go.
Right.
Okay.
You could always issue less.
What do you recommend?
So, I guess I recommend, what I recommend, and this is not always possible, but what I recommend is that you do the due diligence ahead of time to figure out what's best for your community, what you need for a police station. What, you know, what is the most beneficial, would be the most useful, and make a decision, whether it be renovation or new construction, and go with it. And then, and then prove it, prove it to the people who are voting on it. Prove, we, this is why we need this and this is why this is a good thing for the community.
Right.
So, that's my recommendation, but that's not always possible. That's not always something that's possible. So. And, and I recommend that you have good costs, good, good figures, that you get some preliminary bids that, you know, the, and you account for increases in costs because costs don't go down. At least they're not, they don't go down these days. And, you know, and, you know, you, you do what, what, you only do your, you can only do your best and, you know, figure out what you're.
Yeah.
So. But the alter, you know, the, if you can't get to that point, then the non-binding referendum would give you a good feel for what, for what the.
But if we're doing our due diligence prior to that and we're having meetings and we're sending out surveys or we're getting, you know, feedback from the general public, then we should have a better sense over, you know, period of time.
Right.
What people are thinking.
Right.
Which would lead us then maybe to have a better single question as opposed to confusing people.
Correct, correct. So now your next, your next decision obviously is special election versus when you're, when you're, you know, your reg, your general election is, which is two years from now. So when do you want the project to start? When do you need the money? Those are all significant, significant questions. Answers to which you should have before you really, you know, make any, any real decisions.
I'd like to say for anyone that's here, we had an extremely qualified group of men with great credentials. They knew what they were doing. They've done this for years and they're highly regarded in their field. I think two years is too long. We've another two years, another two years. I live a block away, I'll never see the thing. And this is the same, excuse me? Is this is the same group that went in, changed, did what, you know, this way, that way, but we're getting to the point that, my father graduated from that building. And my, my son attended school at that building. And it was built to be, well, oh, what, K through eight in one building from the neighborhood. It was a neighborhood school. And I just feel we've got to get the show on the road. For the men's safety as well.
So that's, to dovetail on that, so that's a logistics question I was just going to ask you. So let's just say for, you know, for purposes, tonight we're going out to an, a special election. We go through all the procedures that you explained, you know, through the legislature, et cetera, et cetera. That is only for that special election, correct? So let's say we decided for whatever reason, we're getting feedback from the community, we have to take it into consideration before making a final decision. We would have to go through the process again with the legislature, correct? For next, let's say we waited for a general election.
No, no, I could, we could, I could draft the legislation such that it could be at an election to be determined by the, at a general or special election to be, on a date to be determined by the town council.
That's good, that's good.
So if you end up pulling it, you know, it could, it could, if you passed it this year,
Right.
you could pull it from November and put it on next November. But you need, you need a good dollar amount. You can't, once you got that not to exceed figure, you can't, you were not going to be able to change that. You'd have to go back to the general assembly to change that.
Yeah. So if we were to extend it for any, we'd have to escalation costs and would have to be.
Right. You'd have to go back. You couldn't, you'd have to.
Yeah, okay.
The general assembly part of this is not the difficult part. It is, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's, you know, I'm sure you have, you know, your legislative delegation is well versed in how to get this done. They know how to get it done and can get it done for you. So.
Does the council have any more questions before we take a vote to open up?
I would just echo that. Ellen, Ellen, right?
Ellen.
She kind of said what I was thinking. I think we need to make a determination. I think before we go out and ask for any portion of money. I think if we're just kind of saying, oh, we're going to do 20 million, but what do we want to do? but what do we want to do? It's been almost ten-plus years. I think the town would, you know, votes us in to kind of listen and make that determination. I think by keep asking, you're just going to end up in a situation where you're going to continue to delay and kick the can down the road. And, you know, I would, I think we should get a clear cost, you know, wait until the March ninth meeting to determine what some of these additional costs are, and then we can make a determination there. Because it sounds like the April one deadline, well, that might be the max, there may be some wiggle room with that.
That's ideal, that would be ideal.
And we can always have a special meetings to determine if, you know, what a resolution would look like. And how much time does it take for you to prep, prep a resolution for the general assembly? Is it like a two-week thing, is it a month thing?
About fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, perfect. I just, I just don't think we should rush.
I've known a ton of it.
Sure said like two weeks. I just don't think we should rush, like, you know, I think, you know, we should be doing our due diligence, and I think we should, you know, kind of have some sense as to where we're going to go. Because we're going to get asked questions, you know, what is the purpose of the twenty million dollars? And once, if you do go off for twenty million dollars, people are going to vote assuming you're going to spend the twenty million dollars. It's the money that gets stuck in people's mind. And then if you said, well, I only went and spent ten, they're going to be like, well, why did you ask for twenty? So I think we should just be really as well-informed as possible and then make our decision.
Would anyone like to make a motion to open up the floor for comment?
Make a motion, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Second.
I make a motion that we open up the floor for discussion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to get up and speak or ask any questions?
Can we ask questions of the, of bond council, or do we have to ask them to you?
Ellen, do you mind?
No.
Okay.
When you say it would be complicated, I'm, I'm not understanding what would be complicated to a voter, because it's the same pattern that we take when we vote for council members. You know, when the, when the question is on the ballot for the council, it says, there might be ten candidates, but it says, vote for only five of the items below. So what, when I think of the description of a question that had multiple choices, it would be, vote for one of the following. A, twenty million dollar, no. B, five million dollar renovation. C, neither. I don't understand how they'd be confused by that. Because I can do that when I'm voting for five of the ten candidates on the ballot for that, and I know I'm only voting for one of those items.
As I said, it can be done.
Yep.
It's just not a recommended thing when it comes to bond, bond questions.
But what is the confusion? Why would they be confused by that?
Depends on the wording.
Okay.
Again, and I've said this, I think I've put this in writing before. Until I see what the actual wording could be, I can't, all I know is, bond questions and the alternative, when you're asking, can, should we do this or that? If, if, for some, if there's a way that both, where you say you can do both, then you don't have a, you don't have a, you don't have an answer.
Right, so you have to see the exact, right.
I would have to see the exact, and I would, we would have to.
Okay. Second question is, if you did the, the scenario where you have them vote on a bond for a certain amount of money, and then you do the poll in non-binding, or, or whichever way, that twenty, if, say the bond was for twenty million dollars and the vote was for twenty million, and the voters authorize that, okay? And then they decide to do a renovation instead, and they only use five million or ten million of the twenty. Can a future council still tap that bond because the voters have authorized that amount of money to be borrowed?
They could, but I think what we would do is at the same time that we did a resolution, I mean, if, if that's something that you, the town council did not want to have happen, where the authorization stays out there, we could extinguish that resolution with, we could extinguish that authority in the resolution authorizing the ten million.
Okay.
So you could easily, you could easily eliminate that extra ten million in authority, so it's not sitting out there.
Okay, thank you.
So the resolution would just go forward at the amount that we actually spent?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, now, now, I mean, some communities want to keep a little.
Right.
I wouldn't advise you to extinguish it necessarily all right away, but because there could be some cost overruns, and you don't want to bind your, you don't want, you know, you want to be able to, to tap in. But you can always, again, tap into your one percent under your charter too, if you wanted to. But, 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 you know, I mean, yes, you could, you, a lot of communities will extinguish their authority.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wanted to ask any questions, or?
I got conferred with the solicitor, that's where Congressman Cicilline is going to be stepping down as a congressperson. I believe his last day will be May thirty-first, and there'll be a special election up in our area for our first congressional seat. So I had that conversation with the solicitor, and I was going to present it, but Tim, he just gave me an email stating, it's coming from electionsri.gov. As you likely know, later this year, there will likely be a special election held for a representative of Congress District One. So the congressman's going to be vacated on June first. I don't know the timing of when an election might take place, and I'm not sure of the timing of when our bond question may go before the voters. But it would be nice if we could connect it in with the congressional, you'll have a bigger turnout.
Thank you. Can you just, sorry? You know the rules.
Paul Vatney, thirty-one Greenwood Street. Just to dovetail into what Mr. Zwinski was talking about, I was going to mention that, that there will be a special election, probably late summer, early fall. So it would only make sense if we were going to have a special election to do it then, because you're going to have a special election anyways. So why not, you're going to have a special election. That's a guarantee, this year you're going to have a special election, so why not piggyback onto it? Sort of like when we were going to piggyback onto a general election. And while I'm up here, I guess. The other comment to, with Ms. Cornow, the comments that she was making. The language that's written into that question is, will really determine on how you go forward. You can be specific, where she talks about general language and stuff. She's done a lot of these, I've worked with a lot of them. And so it, you know, it would say that you're either going to build a new building, or you're going to refurbish the building, demolition. And, and so all of those things are spelled out, what you would use the bond for. So it kind of would be specific, the dollar amount is there, and then it would say to be used to do new construction, demolition, renovation. Am I correct? And, and so it's, it's how it's worded, and it really eliminates the confusion of what you're voting for. Because there's a description of it, as well as the legal language to it. And like I say, I've worked with her before, and she's one of the best.
One more question. Ellen, how do we, how do we as voters, how are we reassured that if we approve a bond, they're going to do what we asked them to do in the bond you gave authorization? Point of, you know, discussion here. This building was supposed to be renovated for the consolidation of the school department and town offices. There is no school department personnel in here. So as a taxpayer, I'm very annoyed that my, what I voted for didn't happen, and it's, they don't have to follow it. So how do, how do we prevent that, or why does that happen, and how can that happen?
So if you have a bond act, and you have various purposes that, that your bond act authorizes, it authorizes the issuance of bonds for X and X and or, or this and that. It ends up being up to the council to determine if that, if those bonds are ever issued. They can't go outside of the purposes of the bond act, but they don't have to do all of the, the items in, in the bond act, because it's a very general authorization. So, so depending on cost overruns, what happens, whether or not, what, you know, whether or not the, the circumstances change such that, you know, such that they don't have enough money to finish the renovation of some, of something. It, it ends up being, being a, up to the people, you know, the, the council who issued, you know, who approves the issuance of the bonds.
So I guess what I'm after is, is there some type of wording that you can put in that actually, you know, you scrub the whole project if you can't accomplish this or something, and goes back to the voters a second time? So that there's a guarantee, there's going to be a big reluctance for people to vote for anything in this town after what happened here. So, you know, I'll never vote for a bond unless I'm positive it's going to happen, and it's going to happen while the current council is seated, because the next council can change their mind and do something different, which is what happened, which is what happened.
Well, they can't, they can't do a lot different. They, they still have to, they still have to.
I mean, this is supposed to be fifty percent.
The bond act, but, but they don't have, they can't do a lot different.
Well, this is, this to me is a lot different. It was supposed to be fifty, second floor for the school department, first floor for the town, and the whole thing is for the town, there's no school department.
Except, except we could be very specific in the bond act. If that bond act that you were talking about, and I know it well.
Yeah.
If that bond act said second floor was going to be renovated to be used for the school department, it did not say that. It said, you know, it said renovations, consolidation, it didn't, it didn't say any.
School department and town offices.
Right, but it did not, it wasn't as specific as what, as, as what I guess was spoken about at a council meeting, at a building committee meeting.
Well, they sent out a flyer showing us the plans to the building.
Exactly, but that is not what, the voters don't vote on plans.
Okay, so you just have to be as specific as possible in the bond?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our, as bond council, our advice is always to be general, because plans change, situations change, things change. So our advice is always to be as flexible and general as possible for certain purposes, so. But if a council saw fit to be extremely specific, and, you know, a hundred thousand to be used for computers, we could do that. Don't recommend it, but, but, but that could be done.
Anyone have any more questions or comments? Ellen, thank you so much for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ellen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the public comment section.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves? Yes, thank you. Now we'll go back up to the top of the agenda for open forum. Melissa?
Good evening. Nice to see all my old friends. I'm here tonight because of the beautiful spring day we had last Thursday, when all the kids wearing shorts walking around town. I was leaving Cumberland Farms, you know, on one oh-two, and all of a sudden, a noise so loud, it practically made me jump out of my skin, just came out of nowhere. And I turned to see three motorcycles in the Cumberland Farms parking lot with me. And then they all revved and jumped in front of me and turned on to the street. And when they did, I noticed, you know, one of them was from New Hampshire, and two of them were from Massachusetts. And I just thought, as much as I love spring, I hate the noise in this town. And I mean, it's, it's something that my neighbors and many other people on one oh-two, Black Plain Road, Log Road.
Greenville Road.
Greenville Road, Pond Hill Road. I don't think I've ever brought this up in the past couple of years without someone else saying, oh, in my neighborhood. And it's funny, because I mentioned it to Mrs. Tebow, and she goes, well, we have bikes. And I said, yeah, but do your bikes have altered exhaust systems? And she said, no, which is the law. And just this weekend, I mean, after that happened on Thursday, I thought, I've got to talk to the council, because this has been going on for way too long. And as you know, with COVID, a lot of folks entertain outside, and we're no different. You know, people come over, we sit on the porch. And anyone that's been on my porch, and some of these people in the room have been there, know that you have to stop speaking because you can't even hear yourself when the motorcycles go by. And this isn't once in a while, this is every single Saturday and Sunday all summer long. And I mean, it's the whole town, like Claire said, it's not just Slatersville, it's the whole town.
Greenville Road is like a racetrack.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, and it's, it's not just one or two. I mean, sometimes it's ten, you know, ten guys go, let's go drive through Slatersville, it's so pretty, let's go drive through there and gun our engines. So anyhow, it, it just really motivated me to say, I'm coming to the council meeting, and, and I just have to look up what can be done. I did a very brief research over the weekend, and, and there's tons of information out there. One of the articles was from the University of Connecticut Department of Earth Sciences. And it, you know, talked about motorcycle noise pollution. And it said, the Environmental Protection Agency is clear, motorcycle noise is a pollutant with medical consequences. According to Noise Off, a national noise abatement organization, all motorcycles are required to display an EPA stamp on the chassis and exhaust system. And the decibel limit for standard street legal exhaust noise emission is eighty decibels. In Connecticut, the biker who pulls up beside you at a red light and takes off with the loudness of a typical car is playing by the rules. A biker riding anything louder is not. This report also, it estimates sixty to seventy percent of bikers remove the mandated factory-installed exhaust equipment and replace it with something well above the legal limit. These are the exhaust systems you've heard idling with the noise of a helicopter in stop-and-go traffic, and causing heart palpitations when they pass you on the interstate. And that was literally the three motorcycles that were at Cumberland Farms with me. And, and those are the kind of motorcycles that go through town all weekend long, all summer long. As soon as, like, it's warm enough, like last Thursday, it's going to start again. The other research I did found, there's a whole guide, Guide to Modified Exhaust Systems, a reference for law enforcement officers and motor vehicle inspectors. And, and what I'm here tonight to say is, you know, just the brief research I did this weekend, numerous towns and cities in the state, Tiverton, Little Compton, East Greenwich, Bristol, Warren, Warwick, Providence, Newport. Newport's actually in the process of getting noise camera, cameras, so they can actually give tickets like you do for speeding in school zones. They've all dealt with this. And I'm here tonight to say, as a, as a community member, as a resident, I am willing to volunteer with this council and this town to once and for all address this. Because it's honestly, it's like Bike Week in Laconia every weekend. And, and I mean, in the case of these really loud bikes, they're really breaking the law on two levels. They're, they're, they're removing the legal exhaust systems and putting something illegal. And they're also exceeding the noise ordinance for this town. So I'm here to say, I would really like this put on the agenda. I'm willing to do whatever wor, I mean, I work in public health policy, I'm more than happy to volunteer to do whatever needs to be done. And it could be as easy as doing what Bristol and Warren did, you know, the last two summers. They put a big sign saying, we're enforcing the noise ordinance. Guess what, all you have to do is warn people. One of the articles I found on a Harley Davidson biker webpage, it, it was funny because it was talking about East Greenwich, and they were saying like, don't go through East Greenwich. So in East Greenwich, if you violate the noise ordinance, the first offense is five hundred dollars, second offense is seven hundred, and the third is a thousand. And I don't think we'd have to give out a lot of tickets before the biker clubs would all say, don't go through North Smithfield, because they're enforcing this. The only other thing I just wanted to add is, you know, it's not just, it's not just, you know, people that live on the main streets. It's also, I've, I've been at funeral services at the congregational church, which is just embarrassing when the minister has to like, stop speaking because motorcycles are going by, you can't hear in the church. And I've seen the park rangers trying to give tours of the town, and they can't be heard. Like, you've got a group of like twenty people that want to see this great historic town, and, and these motorcycle, you know, with the loud exhaust, they don't care. They're at the town comm and just gunning their engines. So with that, I'm going to go pick up my husband and take him to Beef Barn for dinner. And you all know how to reach me, and, and honestly, I am willing to do whatever it takes to finally have a little, you know, peace and quiet enjoyment in this town, which is how it should be. Thank you.
I thank you for bringing it up, because everybody's noticed with a mild winter, it didn't stop. didn't stop much.
Oh, but last Thursday, that one nice day, and they were out in droves, and I'm just, I'm not, I, I just, I can't do it for another summer. It's just, and I know my neighbors feel the same way. My new neighbor who bought the Sutherland's house, she's, I, I don't think she experienced it when she was looking at the house, and she's just appalled at how noisy it was last summer, so, thank you.
Melissa, can you send that packet to the town clerk so she can send it out to us?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Could I just comment on?
Sure.
Chief Tim Lafferty, um, thank you for the, that information. What we can do is, I can start out tomorrow with the traffic division and we'll try to set up some sort of, uh, traffic enforcement unit just to deal with the noise. And the best way we could probably handle it now while, if we want to shop in our ordinances through equipment violation, uh, for the state of Rhode Island. But I'll speak to the captain tomorrow, and we'll try to put a task force together to, uh, air mark certain areas, the quad, uh, School Street, Main Street, and Victory Highway where we know, uh, there's some popular, uh, spots there. And if we observe a violation, we'll definitely ticket them. Again, and, and I know what you saw on the websites, and, and I get it, when you enforce the law and they see a lot of cruises with lights, uh, word gets around. Uh, so we, we will try to address that. And, uh, but we can't be everywhere all the time, and I apologize for that, but, uh, although we'll have a task force out, uh, we can't be everywhere all the time, that's all. But I thank you for your, uh, your complaint, and we'll try to do the best we can.
And I, I think honestly, just having the signs up like Bristol and Warren did during the summer, you know, just put people on notice.
I'll, I'll look into, I'll look into that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mike Clifford.
I'd like to ask, um, first of all, the presentation that you got last week from the captain, I'd really strongly suggest, I'm sorry, I'd really strongly suggest that on this sheet, this one sheet shows you the drawings and whatever is involved in the renovation to repair the front wall. I don't, you can't tell from what you're looking at here what they're doing on this. There's a whole slide presentation. So I'd suggest that before you vote on anything, you get a copy of the entire packet showing the full pages of each document so you know exactly what's happening and what's being done. Um, secondly, I, I would like to know if we're going to be able to ask questions of the auditor on the audit. I've had some for several years, and if I have to say it now, I'll ask him now, or we can ask her when she comes up, if we're allowed to.
I don't see why we wouldn't open it up, that's.
Okay. And the third thing is, um, it's already begun again because I've been discussing going with the 2016 renovations, and there's misinformation already being sent out there as propaganda about what those plans did and what they didn't do, and what Mr. Rami did incorrectly and what he didn't do incorrectly, and, you know, all that hearsay. That man who did those designs has never been before this council since then, since he, you approved them. And Kim was on the council at the time you approved the original plans, Paul, that was the administrator. Um, there was nothing wrong with those plans, they met code, they, I mean, the whole, the lines about, you know, they wouldn't even get a building permit, that was nonsense, they were all inspected. I'd like you to, really, if you're going to contemplate anything to do with renovations, it'd be nice to have him, invite him back here to defend his reputation and correct the misstatements that have been made, and let him, you know, address those people who want to say he did this wrong and did that wrong, and give him the opportunity to point out that, no, you're misinformed and he's correct. Okay? Uh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move down to new business. See discussion by council vote or other action on audit presentation by Bacon &amp; Company LLC, year ending 2022, Cheryl Langvin, Audit Manager.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Langvin from Bacon &amp; Company, this is Pat Fouché, the Audit Partner. Uh, I was the manager on your engagement, so hopefully you all have your audit reports. It's a pretty large document, so I'm going to give you a brief overview, and then you can ask me any questions. Um, you should also have received, uh, two letters from us, a management letter and then a general, um, letter that we give you at the conclusion of the audit. So basically, page one of the audit report is our opinion, which was unmodified. Starting on page four is management's discussion and analysis, which is essentially kind of like an executive summary of the audit, if you're, you know, want summarized information. But I'm going to start with page 13, which are the government-wide financial statements. So these are fully accrual financial statements, um, the governmental activities include all the governmental funds of the town and the school. The business-type activities are basically the water and sewer funds. So towards the bottom of page 13, uh, you'll see governmental activities ended the year with 27.2 million in net position. Of that amount, you're showing a deficit, unrestricted deficit, sorry, of 13 million. The business-type activities ended the year with 11.1 million in net position. Of that amount, 3.9 is unrestricted. If you flip the page to, uh, page 14, that's huh?
Can we move this up? It's in line.
Oh. So page 14, that's a PDF, so now all the pages are numbered, sorry. There's some, yeah, keep going. 13, all right, so 14 is next. So page 14, uh, is basically the activity statement for the balance sheet we were just looking at. So towards the bottom of that page, you'll see that the governmental activities increased net position last year, 7.3 million, and business-type activities increased net position Next is page 15, which is your governmental fund financial statement. So 15 through 18 are basically your governmental funds. On page 15, it's basically the balance sheet. Your general fund towards the bottom of the page ended the, uh, year with fund balance of 12.1 million. Of that amount, 8.8 is unassigned. Next to that is the school unrestricted fund. They ended the year with 1.6 million of fund balance. Um, of that amount, 1.4 million is restricted for education, and then they have various other assignments. Your American Rescue Plan Fund, um, is showing no, uh, fund balance at year end because you have to recognize the, um, revenue as you spend it, so it's always going to be zero. Um, but if you look at unearned revenue, so basically you have unspent revenue of 1.8 million, that's about halfway down the page. And then the final column is the other governmental funds, which is basically all the other funds of the town and school. So that, those funds ended the year with about 4.1 million in fund balance. If you flip the page to page 17, it's basically the activity statement for your governmental funds, about three quarters of the way down the page. Your general fund, uh, increased fund balance by 1.2 million. The school decreased their fund balance by 537,000. And then your other governmental funds increased by $8,900. Next set of statements on page 19 are your proprietary funds, which are basically your water and sewer fund. Uh, towards the bottom of the page, the net position of the water fund was 2.6 million. Of that amount, 357,000 was unrestricted. Your sewer fund ended the year with 8.5 million in net position. Of that amount, almost 3.6 was unrestricted. On page 20 is basically your activity statement, so you'll see three quarters of the way down, the water fund increased net position 137,000, sewer fund 531,000. After that, uh, is a cash flow statement, if you're interested. Uh, the next set of, the final set of fund statements are fiduciary funds, so that's your OPEB fund. And you have a small private purpose fund, so your OPEB fund is showing 1.6 million in net position. And then on page 24, again, the activity statement, you increased your, your net position in your OPEB fund 19,000 last year. So following that is a whole bunch of notes. Um, I'll point out the ones that you're probably most interested in, but you can ask me questions at the end. Um, on page 37, note seven, um, gives you a nice table of all the town's long-term liabilities, your bonds, your notes, your leases, your net pension liability. Basically has everything consolidated into one table, uh, broken down between governmental and business-type activities. So your net pension liability, about three quarters of the way down that page, uh, was 17.5 million at the end of last year, and your OPEB liabilities were 9.8. And then, following, if you're interested, you're, you have, there are detailed notes on all your pension, um, your pension plans, starting on page 56. Then you kind of get into, there's, um, additional required supplementary information starting on page 79. So this information is useful because it, it gives you, um, multi-year information on your pension plans, your OPEB plan, so you can kind of see, you know, how things are going, has it gotten better, has it gotten worse, that type of thing. And then also in your required supplementary information section is what you're really interested in, your budget-to-actual statements, which start on page 89. So, excuse me, so you can, um, it's basically page 89 and 90 are the town, and page 91 are the school. So on page 90, the town had a surplus of 949, almost $1,000 budgetary basis last year, and the school had a surplus of 332. Then, following that, there's some, um, detailed information. Um, I know in the front of the report where it says other governmental funds, uh, starting on page 97, is basically a detail of all the funds that make up other governmental funds. So if you were interested in the town building fund or the school building fund, that's where you'll find that information, starting on page 97. And then the last section of this report starts on page 113, which is the single audit Uh, we tested two programs this year, your school lunch program and your ESSR program, both on the school side. Um, there were no findings related to the single audit. We did have a finding on, um, our Yellow Book Report related to the tax levy, the, the amount was wrong, so that's on page 119. And then on page 121, 120, 121 is a listing of basically all your federal funds, um, all the grants you received from, that were federal for last year. So that is a very, very quick overview of the report. I don't know if anybody has specific questions or specific areas that I didn't touch on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, hi, I, so I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
So I was reading on page nine that the unassigned fund balance in the general fund represents 21.64% of the total fiscal year 2022 general fund budgeted expenses. And I know there's about 8.9 that's unassigned right now.
Mm-hmm.
And the town has an ordinance that says that the fund balance will be maintained, found on page 43, of a minimum of 12%, but not more than 16%, 16% of the general fund expenditures. So I didn't know it any other way, in, in any other place in, in this audit of what the percentage was found by you guys. Is it, I just want to interpret that the 8.9, is that closer to the 17% of the total, like, of the total budget? Or is it truly 21% and we're like 5% over what our ordinance has on the books?
Uh, let me just. So, so that's the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I have my definitions correct here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's basically more than, yes.
It's, it's more than what, yeah.
Yes.
So the reason I brought that up is, and, and we can have a discussion later, is, you know, we've heard that there's no money for Halliwell to take down the buildings. We have money that's sitting in unassigned fund balance, almost 8.9 million dollars. We could take some of that money, still be healthy and comfortable in terms of our ordinance, and just replenish it at a future date. But I just wanted to make sure I understood how much money is.
Yeah, I mean, this, like I said, this was prepared by the finance director, so.
Yeah, no, yeah.
You know, we don't audit these numbers, we read it to make sure it's accurate, but, you know, assuming the math is correct and everything, which I believe it is, um, you know, it's, you know, a calculation definitely, and I would say, you know, um.
There's a healthy amount in there. Okay.
You're, you're over, you're right.
Thank you.
Anyone on the council have any other questions? I know, it's still kind of digesting it. So if we need, if we need to reach out to you at a later date after we, because we really didn't have a lot of time to go through all this, but if we need to reach out to you at a later date, is that something we can do?
Yep.
Okay.
So do you see anything glaringly that we should be paying attention to immediately before we digest the rest of this?
Well, as you just said, your fund balance in the general fund. Just looking to see, not, you don't have any deficits in any of the smaller funds, I mean, nothing that I really, you know, noted.
So you still have 1.8 million left in that.
And we have the management letter findings, which you have that.
Mm-hmm.
Report, or the letter also, I don't know if you have any questions on that.
I think, I, there's an awful lot to, to go through, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we've only had a few days really to look at it, and we've had a lot of things going on in the last few days. Um, so if you don't mind, if we have questions that we can collect, so we're not calling you individually, just, you know, give you a buzz, and if we have three or four questions and get those answers, great. Thank you.
Do you want to open up questions? Did anyone want to make a motion to open the floor for discussion, um, on the audit report?
I'll make a motion. Oh, make a motion to open the floor briefly for the audit report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Any questions, quickly?
What was the, um?
Can you, uh?
Can you, can you just explain what? Could you just explain what the error was with regard to the tax levy?
Oh, it's on, if you read the finding, so when you pass the tax levy, the resolution says the tax levy isn't supposed to be less than, it's supposed to be in a range, basically, it has to be in a range. So basically, the tax levy wasn't in the range.
We had to back down.
Sure, you can explain. So, oh, sorry. Yeah, it's my understanding, motor vehicle mistaken, we got left off. That's it. Okay.
Cynthia Jesus Pryor, Finance Director. When we report to the state, we exclude motor vehicle. When we report to the levy, we should have included the motor vehicle, so it was just not included. It didn't make a, it didn't make a difference in any, any pertinent or rate or anything like that.
Thank you.
Well, tied into that, that's, that's, I guess what I'm after here is, I, I read the note where you said, you know, the taxes, property taxes came in, $771,000 over what you, we anticipated and budgeted, which is an astronomical amount. thousand dollars over what we anticipated and budgeted, which is an astronomical amount for that, and that's why we ended up with the surplus of nine-hundred-and-eighty-three, which means we were taxed for more than we should have been. And in your footnote, you said, you know, we used an employee, a collection agency and a couple of other things. We've always done those things. So I'm wondering why and how, and there is, I couldn't find the breakdown of, you know, where was all that revenue from property taxes coming from? Could, or did, was that tied with the, you know, was it this year's taxes or taxes in arrears or...
I'm looking, kind of, I'm looking at page one-oh-four.
I mean, that's kind of uncommon, isn't it, to have that...
Page two-one-oh-five.
Yep.
So this is on a cash basis, but it's, see, it gives you by levy.
Right.
This is what was collected for the year, and then there's the sixty-day rule, I mean, and that's, you know, so you can kind of see, I mean, they were collecting on, you know, eight-hundred thousand was from the prior year, you know.
But why, I mean, when I look at other audits of other communities that are on the municipal website, nobody ended up with that much of an overage in property taxes. That's not, I mean, that's not something that usually fluctuates that much, is it?
I mean, you know, we...
I'm one, I guess I'm going to go right to the bullet. I'm wondering if there's a problem with our tax rules.
How do you mean?
Are we, the figures that we use here, are we, are we not, are we billing for more than what we actually anticipate billing for?
Well, also, you know, it's based on collection rate, so if your collection rate is better, then, I mean, you, I mean, not what you're calling.
Yeah, can you, can you use the mic? Can you bring that mic?
Our collection rate's always been pretty good.
Well, it was, so it would be, so you're concerned about the levy, but it also depends not just on what's levied, it's if you have a good collection, your collection rate's higher, that's what the revenue that's recognized is based on your collection rate, it's not the total levy amount.
But we always have a good collection rate, and it doesn't fluctuate that much, but that's it, that's a, I don't know, I just thought something's got to be wrong somewhere for that to come up that high.
Like I said, that's when you do your, that's all part of the budgeting process, so, we're just auditing the figures.
Okay.
You're auditing the actual figures. I mean, you know, you're...
But your collection rate, we've seen collection rates be higher though, more recently, in the last couple of years overall, I would say.
I think the collection is...
Okay, and one last question, and then, I'll be, the interest earned on, on bond money that isn't spent, I was always under the impression that if it was a construction bond, then the interest earned while the building was being constructed got paid to the bond. But if it was a general obligation bond, the interest earned on a general obligation bond should be going into the fund balance for the town to pay off the debt as part of our operating revenue. We've been, I think, putting interest earned on unspent general obligation bonds into the project.
That's still allowed.
That is still allowed?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask one other thing, please?
Who said that?
Yes, if you notice, we have seniors that had their taxes frozen, and then when they sold their property, they had to pay back those taxes. Some people did not realize it, others just paid it. Whether it was debts and the family sold it, they still had the obligation, because a few came before us, but others just paid it. So that accounts for some of the money as well.
Well, on page thirty-one, the collection rate of the twenty-one tax rule last year was ninety-eight-point-five percent. I'm not sure what the, what, what did you budget, do, I don't know if you know.
Ninety-eight-point-five, I'm pretty sure. I, I thought the top of my head is, see, the ninety-eight-point-five are what you...
So it was a pretty high collection rate last year. I don't know how, I don't have the other years with me, so I'm not sure.
They missed you during the tax sale, too, because you had a tax sale, really a lot of them consistent.
Yeah, I think you missed tax sales during some of the COVID years because of COVID.
Counsel, have any more questions? Want to close the public, the public comment?
I make a motion to close the public comment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Thank you very much, and we'll reach out to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, back up to the top, discussion by council voter, other action on payment of bills.
I have just a couple of quick questions. I noticed there were three police cruisers that were purchased. Is that all of them for this year, or do we have another one? That's three?
Yeah, well, we had, we received a final paperwork from the trust today following us.
For the other one?
Insurance thing, so.
Oh, so we're good to go? They got what they need? Good, okay, thank you. Sixteen-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars for the land trust reimbursement, I'm just, I just don't know what that's about.
Sixteen-hundred, I believe that would be part of the half payment for signing, so it was put up in full part.
Okay.
And the land trust.
So right to the, right to the next profit.
I believe that's their insurance.
That's their insurance?
I think so. We...
So we pay the insurance?
Yeah, it's a town council contribution to the, to the land trust.
Excuse me, I just spoke.
Okay.
They have, so.
Okay.
Which ever already been...
And that's an annual, that's an annual number? Okay, great, thank you. I think there was only one more, I just, oh, Venrogasta for thirty-five-hundred dollars for services rendered.
Land returnee represents us in mediation and whatnot.
Okay. Okay, there, that's two, one, very good. Thank you so much.
I have a, I have a question. So I asked it last month, and I'm going to ask it again. Is it possible to get where we are in year-to-date and quarter-to-date budget-to-actuals? I just think, as we're heading into the budget season, it's good to know. I know the Budget Committee gets it periodically, but I think every time we get one of these, we can kind of see where we are in relation to the budget, and just have that knowledge leading up to June, and also just a chart of accounts as well, so that we can easily trace back.
So I'm having trouble with the chart of accounts because our new GL software doesn't have that. Our new GL software is strange to me in the sense that it breaks our GL numbers up into two pieces, one called a budget unit and one called an account, and I can't find a report called a chart of accounts that puts them both together, like, when each piece is linked to the full GL number. I can't find a report for that, but our budget has it listed that way. So I don't know if you can use our approved budget as the chart of account for that?
Yeah, I can use that to walk back, yeah.
And we did just finish uploading some information, so I should be able to provide you with a profit and loss statement, like, budget-to-actual for...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Up through the first two quarters?
Awesome, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the Town of North Smithfield invoices in the amount of two-million-six-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-six cents.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by council voter, other action on consent agenda, all items listed in this section are considered one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council is so requests, in which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A town council minutes of December nineteenth at six-fifteen, January twelfth and seventeenth, and February sixth and fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Communications from Animal Control monthly report of January two thousand and twenty-three. North Smithfield Police Department monthly report of January two thousand and twenty-three. North Smithfield Municipal Court monthly report for January two thousand and twenty-three, and North Smithfield Fire and Rescue monthly report for January two thousand and twenty-three. Would anyone like to remove anything? I would like to remove the minutes of December nineteenth, February sixth, and January seventeenth. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda less those items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. The minutes of December nineteenth, can we just make a note in there that, for attendees, we also invited Paul Vatney into the executive session? January seventeenth, it's really just a question, on page three, second paragraph, the first one says, "Monte Carlo stated he reached out to an engineer at Green Development" and then said, "He stated the permit was to be installed with accordance." I'm not sure if installed is the right word there. Can we just check the notes on that? And February sixth, on the second page, purchase a police vehicle, can we just make a note that that was actually an insurance reimbursement from a totaled vehicle and not from the, from And then also the next one to the amendment to Code of Ordinance, Section eight dash twenty-nine, Chapter eight, the Sewers and Sewers Disposal Code, Michael Scott, he's not actually from Thirty-three White Parkway, he's from one-hundred Follett Street. That's all I have. Does anyone have anything?
My name is a typo, would you like to read the section?
Sure, yeah.
February fifteenth, second page. Seven, four, from the bottom. Mr. Boragad stated his little concealing that the town has a fox's greater potential, which increases food needs. Just upper case for fox and square, it's a minor typo.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone want to make a motion to accept those as amended?
Make a motion to accept as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you. Discussion by council voter, other action on status progress report on completion of specific items, discussion by council voter, other action on update of municipal building review task force, Mr. Nordstrom. He's not here.
Mr. Nordstrom, update.
Are you, did you want?
Yes, same way, he was attending to, there was no update.
No update.
Last week, the next one will be for nine.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm here just to please have a question.
All right, thank you. Discussion by council voter, other action on revision of Article sixteen, General Provision, Section eight, financial interest prohibited of North Smithfield Town Charter.
I'm hungry?
I know. So we're just bringing this back up, because you made that change that we spoke about.
This is, yeah, I made the change that the council referred to. So now the only exception to the, to any kind of business interest is someone who owns five percent or less in a company that does business with the town. The charter says that's fine, they can do that. But this excludes the situation we talked about, somebody who is married to someone who theoretically has a contract with the town, and they work for the town, they wouldn't be able to get a contract with the town.
And so, so just for everyone who's listening, so it would, this would be something that will be given to vendors as they enter into an agreement with us, and they would sign that on, on the honor system, that they don't have any of the aforementioned issues.
Well, all we can do is ask the vendors to fill this out.
Yeah.
The penalty for it is the contract is void.
Okay.
That's the penalty. That's the penalty under your charter. Now, you know, that's, I don't know what else you can do besides that. It's not a, it's not, this isn't a criminal matter. This is strictly the council's decision and the public decision that they don't want someone to do business with the town because they have someone in their, someone in their family has a relationship with the town. It's not, it's not, it's not an ethical issue, and it's not a, it's not a criminal matter, it's strictly a preference of your, of your charter. This would not be an ethical violation of any kind.
Well, not, not with, not an ethical in that term, but in our terms, it is ethic, it's an ethics that we're trying to promote in town, I guess you could say.
If this is an emergency, and you need one now, so you just let it go till you can find someone? And go to bid? So you don't have rights, you may not have this here and there.
You've got, you've got, you've got, you've got a lot of options, you can get somebody to come in and do the work in an emergency that doesn't, is not married to somebody who works for the town.
I'm saying, if they cannot.
I, I, I don't know the answer to that, like, I can't, I, I don't have an answer for that. You have the State Master Price List Agreement, which doesn't require a bid, you have less than five-thousand dollars that doesn't require a bid, and you have, I would assume, more than one contractor in the state that you could contact that doesn't have a relationship with people in town. But that's just a guess of options that you go through.
Mm-hmm, no, that's true, they're all true.
Again, this is not my decision, this is what the council asked me to do.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the contractor certification compliance as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
So, Madam President, before we did the roll call, so, so the purchasing agent for the town should require that anybody gets a contract has to sign this, because I don't care if you award a contract, what happens, they have to sign this before the contract, because after they get the contract, they're going to have a problem. You know, it being void afterwards, then they theoretically already have received some funds or things like that. So this has to be signed...
Prior to...
At, before they, you know, before they get the contract, there has to be a responsibility of your purchasing agent. That's the way it's going to work.
Right. Which is the finance director in town, correct? Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, we do.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. New business discussion by council voter, other action on proposed stormwater ordinance amendment, Chapter fourteen, Article one, Section fourteen, Mr. Penegas. Also, first reading.
No, Madam President, certainly Mr. Penegas can explain, it doesn't require to be read, but technically it's first reading, you schedule this for another date, public hearing, and you can have the second reading and approval at the, the next meeting, because this is not a, this is not one of the require, this is not a type of condition, it's not a finance, it's not a, it's not any kind of franchise, any zone change, or any personnel change, so it doesn't require an advertised hearing, it only requires a, a public hearing. Really, by, by my recommendation, your charter doesn't automatically do it, but I think it's always good to have a public hearing in every piece of legislation that you pass. So that's been my practice for the last number of years. Obviously, you would schedule the public hearing and the second reading, that's when it actually takes. But Mr. Penegas could explain it, this was drafted, Mr. Penegas and, I believe, with the planner's assistance, and I did review it after talking to Mr. Penegas.
Good evening, Ray Penegas, Public Works Director. What, what made us look into this is this beautiful winter we're having, and everyone's, some pumps in town are pumping and discharging basement water into the roadway. We don't normally run into this until April or May, therefore, there's no icing conditions. We've had some serious icing conditions on several streets this year. several streets this year. There's one ordinance on the books that deals with storm water in our drainage system. If there is no drainage system in town on certain roads, which is what precipitated this certain ordinance change or amendment two, this would cover that lack of with the stormwater management ordinance we have. Other than that, I don't have the authority to tell a homeowner that he can't pump or discharge water into the roadway. This would take care of that. And then I wouldn't have my crews sanding roads all winter and weekends because of certain people.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, before you leave, so right now, the way it stands, you have no authorization to tell someone not to do that?
That's correct. I don't.
Oh. Well, this is very good.
Yes.
Madam President, may I suggest that you schedule the public hearing for the next council meeting and the second reading for the next council meeting?
Okay.
So that this can get on the books in a relatively quick fashion.
Tammy, can you make a note of that, please? So now I'm just making a motion to, now just a motion to table it to the next?
Not table it. Schedule the, the sec, the public hearing and the second reading for the next council meeting.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion, please?
Make a motion, oop. Make a motion that we schedule our next town council meeting, which is March sixth. And also the public hearing at the same time, so this can be enacted as soon as possible.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Ms. O'Gier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Okay, discussion by council vote or other action on approval of resolution for multi-generational advisory committee. All right, so the solicitor also drew up the resolution to have the multi-generational advisory committee selected. Do I have to read this into?
You don't need to, but you need to pass it.
Okay.
And then after you pass it, I think you'd have to next, unless you're prepared tonight, I think next meeting is when you would appoint people to the, to that committee.
All right. So this is basically for the, the Scouters Municipal Call. So the membership that we had agreed on would be nine members. They should all be residents of Town North Smithfield and serve without compensation. It's one member from the present town council should be appointed by the town council, one member from the public at large, which will be appointed by the town council, one member of the public at large appointed by the town administrator, two members from North Smithfield Scout Troop four thirty-eight and/or Troop eleven thirty-nine, appointed by the town council, two members from North Smithfield Senior Citizen Advisory Committee and shall be appointed by town council, and two members with a background in architecture, engineering, or construction shall be also appointed by the town council. Did anyone want to make a motion to accept this resolution?
Madam President, you, you, you made a very good comment.
And/or.
And/or, and I didn't have that, so please include that in the, please make an amendment to, to that, that particular item, paragraph number four.
Okay.
Before you vote.
All right. With the amendment?
With the amendment.
In paragraph four.
Okay.
Second.
I make a motion to accept the resolution of the Town North Smithfield establishing the multi-generational advisory committee with the amendment to number four, adding and/or.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just had a quick, well, a quick observation first. It wasn't in my packet. So there was a digital copy, so I was able to find it. It's not loading now, but I was able to get it that way. I just wanted everyone to know that it wasn't in there. No. And then the other thing, I was just, just want to have a understanding of, just to make sure I interpreted what I read correctly. So is the focus to kind of start from the beginning and kind of get an understanding of, you know, what we want to see over at Scouters? Or is the focus going to be on, we already know what we want? Because I know the last meeting we talked about, like, you know, they could have charrettes and other type of stuff. Well, are we actually going to focus on the architecture and, you know, contracting an architect and bringing in civil engineers and doing all that type of legwork? You know, with the start date, it looked like of May according to the grant proposal. So that's what I was just trying to understand.
So in the resolution, we have that the MAC will review and identify the activities, programs, services, and facility needs of town residents of all ages and make recommendations to the town council regarding the construction design and floor plan of the multi-generational community center to ensure that the multi-generational community center will serve the activity program and facility needs of town residents of all ages, i.e. seniors, scouts, et cetera. The MAC with prior town council approval may be aided by the assistance of a consultant. So it's basically, they're going to help with what we see for programs there, what we would need in the building and what to have those programs and services. I think that's, that's kind of where we were starting.
Yeah, no, makes sense. I just want to.
To see what the building needed or what, what the concept of it was with the different, with the different community that we would be using it, the different committees that would be using it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, opposed to. I just wanted to make sure I understood the, from what I did see, make sure I understood the wording, that's all.
And we're very lucky on this committee because Linda Tebow, who has been very active in Moon Socket for years, utilizing Scouters Hall for neighboring seniors and friends, should be a source. We had good engineers. For others, we had good architects. And you are, in a sense, an architect. You've done it, you know it works, and you know it doesn't work. So I just say it has to be a very high place for you because whatever you've done up to now has worked. We don't have to try a trial and failure here.
I'd also like to ask, once the committee's established, if they can do charrettes or surveys or meeting with people, just to get feedback so that we know that what we think they might like, they really do. Or they think, well, you know, I don't want pickleball, I want table tennis or whatever, just so we have a better sense of what we're putting in there so we can do it once and do it right.
Yeah, and one of the other paragraphs too, on the back, it just says that this committee will be charged with the following duties: Review and identify the existing activities, services, and programs conducted at Scouters slash Municipal Hall. Review and identify the activities, programs, services, and facility needs of town residents of all ages. Review information provided by any consultant retained by the town council. Conduct public meetings and accept public comment regarding the activity, program, and facility needs of town residents of all ages. So.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again. It's the first I've heard of, of the compilation of who's going to be on this committee. Personally, I think nine people is too many for a committee. I think that's evident of, of this past Halliwell Committee. It gets to a point where nothing gets accomplished. I'll, I'll refer to the Building Review Committee of five people. That gets a lot of things accomplished. I don't necessarily agree, it's just my opinion, that you need two from Scouts, you need two from the seniors. You have more than capable, Mrs. Tebow, one person, who's already involved with the, the senior program. I haven't, I heard no mention of any employee from my department that the administrator would probably appoint. But I haven't seen that. So I, I just feel I had to say something before you vote in nine people without any input from the administration, because it's the first I've heard of it. And I'll, and I'll say again, I think nine people is way too many people for this project itself.
Well, I think a lot of the people that were on here were recommendations from the administrator, actually himself, to make sure that we had, you know, a, a good cross-section of people that would be either already using the building or using it in the future, you know. So I guess we can take into consideration reducing the number. I don't know if Mrs. Tebow would even, you know, at some point relish having fewer people to, would you relish having fewer people to, to corral, as we say? You would prefer fewer.
I like seven.
You like seven.
Seven's a decent number. Architects, we're going to hire those people. So whoever is, is going to champion the leadership of this committee has to identify, you don't have to put an architect and an engineer as part of the committee. They're going to be hired to be part of the committee that oversees this project. At least that's where I'm coming from on it. If you're going to stick with nine, I think it's, I just hope it doesn't get bogged down with every, there's just too much going on and nothing's getting, getting accomplished. That's, I just felt that I had to kind of throw that in there.
Well, can I ask another question? If we keep nine, all nine voting members, or could you do five voting members or whatever number, odd number works with alternates like other committees have? Zoning and planning both have alternates. I know this is a little different, but in theory it would work, right? You have five voting, and if somebody doesn't make it, the alternate steps in.
Madam President, one of the, one of the questions I had, and it may not be a sticking issue, but a member of the present town council shall be appointed by the town council. Would that be an ex officio with voting, voting to opine on things?
Well, that's what I had mentioned last meeting, in that the town council member would not be voting.
Would not.
Then Mr. Buregard argued the fact that the town council person should be a voting member, but I would think they, it's going to be kind of like a liaison position, that they're going to come back to the council and just kind of report out with, with the chairperson of that committee. So, I mean, that would be one person. And if we, and if we, I mean, we could do three members at large and not do architect, architect, engineering, or construction. It was just, that was considered that maybe that person would have some expertise or just guide the committee in a direction. But, I mean, this is the time that we can make changes. Any thoughts on?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it.
But I still think that no matter what committee you go to, there's not always full attendance. So, you know, you have nine, what's the chances that every, every meeting's going to have nine attendants?
That's why I bring up the question. If you have nine and you don't have, if you have nine and you don't have a quorum, you're not going to be able to get anything done. So for nine, you're going to need at least six. So if everyone can't make a meeting and you're stuck at three and four and five, you could, you know, I would hope that everyone would show up, and it probably would be the case. But you run the risk of you need more to get a quorum, to keep it moving, to keep it moving, going.
Linda, how do you feel about that? How do you feel about that?
Yeah, well, now's the time, right? Now's the time because this is the best opportunity.
I like seven. I know when we had talked about people. Said seven or nine. The senior advisory committee is seven. We get a quorum of four. It works, you know. But I like seven. And as far as Parks and Rec, we did talk about Parks and Rec, Ray. You know, that just by the fact that we're on the admin team, that they would be involved because I work closely with Kate there. But, you know, I like seven. I thought the idea of having an architect on board was a good idea because, Claire, thank you for saying I was an architect. I don't know a dang thing about building and plumbing and stuff like that, though. I think that would be a good idea. But I do like seven.
And Ray has some good men that could help out. He knows his staff.
So let me just, let me just, so Parks and Rec, are we talking about Parks and Rec committee? Or are we talking about Parks and Rec?
Well, I don't know if we have to be an official member of the committee, but I think Parks and Rec would be very much involved.
I'm just having a hard time reading this.
Well, I mean, Parks, Parks, I mean, it's, I, I think they could meet hand in hand, but this is like, because.
You know, just a, a member because they're on the admin team and they'd be involved.
Yeah. So are you saying Parks, are you saying Parks and Rec department or committee?
Uh, no, the department.
Okay.
Well, presently, right now, I have Kate Pascarella, my program coordinator, oversee any operations at, at the Scouters Hall. And that includes this. Thank you. And that includes the seniors in all scouting activities. So anything that I need, I go through Kate to find that stuff out. She already knows the inner workings of those organizations. I'm not saying that she has to be a voting member. And I think that this is where it gets a little dicey, who's a voting member and who's going to be required to be at these meetings. What I was trying to read, I can't see even my glasses. Personally, I think the planner or the assistant planner should be on that committee. They're the ones that put in for the grant, and they have the most knowledge of that grant than anyone in this room. So even before myself, I would take a backseat to the planner or his designate.
Right, I think that's a good point, but I think as the director of Public Works is responsible for all infrastructure and buildings in the town, I'm not saying that you should be on it, but your input would be greatly appreciated. Going back to Parks and Rec, who reports to you? Now, if it's not Kate, who by the way is limited to nineteen hours, we all know puts in forty hours a week. If there was somebody off the Parks and Rec team, Parks and Rec Committee that might want to help out, I, I, it's a tough call.
Yeah. Regarding the Parks and Rec Commission, they don't have the expertise that would be needed to answer the questions on scheduling and what we would put into that hall and to reconfigure it and to, to put in the groundwork. The commission, they basically listen to Kate fill them in on what has to be done. So.
The member from the present town council? Out and put in a member of, I mean, they can serve as a liaison, but they would not be a voting member, right?
You may want to appoint members of the administration as ex officio non-voting.
Non-voting, that's what I'm saying.
You don't have to go to every meeting.
Right.
But you use it, you use the planner's expertise.
Right.
And Ray, too. Different than the finance director. At times you may want these people to.
That's right.
You call ex officio non-voting members.
So I don't know if everybody heard, but.
You can shrink the actual number of voting members down, condense it down, and then use your administration ex officio members, non-voting, to fill it in.
Yep.
Yeah, because that's what we had talked about.
Sounds good.
Because we had said the planner doesn't actually have to be on the committee, and because we even talked about fire and police, they don't have to actually be on the committee, but they can get the minutes. And if there's something that they need to attend just to answer questions in a planning stage, then we.
I think, I, I think when we go back to the middle school call, I think we did that with the plant manager for the school department operation.
Facility director.
Yeah. So they were ex officio. That, that was the question I had on there of ex officio unvoting, so.
Okay, what do we want to do?
Ex officio.
I think if you want to get it to seven, you can take the two members with a background in architecture, and you could reconfigure the public at large. And you could just preference that you would like to see those skills from people that apply. I mean, we get resumes from, for the committees when people apply to them. So, I mean, it's just an idea.
So are you saying five voting members?
No, we have one member of public at large appointed by the town council, one member of public at large should be appointed by the town administrator, and then two members with a background in architecture, engineering, or construction. So they're both members of the town, those last two. The appointment by the council and the appointment by the administrator could just, you, you know, we are going to consider applicants with a background in those areas. We require a resume and background usually, and then that would get you to the seven. And then you can add in any ex officio people you want after that as non-voting. And then you can add in any ex officio people you want after that as non-voting.
Just, just starting with the categories that have two members, I just wanted to wonder, would one member from the senior advisory committee be sufficient? Would one member from the scouting crew be sufficient? That would get it down right away to seven without changing the categories. Then you can look at changing, I guess, the categories, instead of two members from architecture, those two members could be one from, as a director, from the Department of DPW, the director of DPW or designee appointed as a non-voting ex officio, and then one from the Department of Planning or designee and appointed to serve as a non-voting ex officio. And that gets you down to seven, without touching the council appointment, the administrator's appointment, the council at large appointment, and you're still keeping representatives from the scouts, and obviously, most importantly, the seniors, senior group. It's just, you're playing with that last category. You're removing that out, turning it into two ex officios, so there'd be seven members with two ex officios, and they are a designee of the director of planning. Again, assuming that you're satisfied, the numbers came, the two members, I don't know where the two came from, I don't know if I came up with them or they were discussed, I don't have my notes from that meeting. I think they might have been discussed.
I think they were just discussed, so that we would have different.
So I don't know, you could play with that anyway. I was just looking for a way to get it down to seven, so that way you'd have four, quorum of four. And if you wanna go down to five, then you can start playing with the other category of, really, then you're really gonna get into the council appointment and the administrative appointment.
Yeah. I mean, that makes, that still covers everyone.
Mrs. Tebow? Is that okay? So it gives you your seven?
Yeah, you know, I like the seven. And, you know, with all due respect, Ray, you know, when we said two from the senior advisory and two from scouts, perhaps what we were thinking when we talked about it was that the folks that are using it right now are probably using it more than anybody else, and that's why we went that way. It could be too much. That's, that's, that's you are.
I just.
Blame it on you.
You gotta decide what's mine, seven or five, so you have to decide between the two. Or maybe just get rid of the two, just the two, the two members regarding architect, engineering.
We'll go with seven.
I'll make a motion that we do that. So we have one member from the present town council, appointed by the town council, a member from the public at large, appointed by the town council, a member of public at large, appointed by town administrator, two members of the North Smithfield Scout Troop 438 and Troop 1139, 'cause they are different, right? Have different needs, and shall be appointed by the town council, two members from the North Smithfield Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, appointed by the town council, period.
And then ex officio members.
And then ex officio members would be the director of planning and/or designee, and the director of public works and/or designee. Do I have a second? No.
No.
What? The architects, no.
No.
We will hire them. No.
Can I just point out that I'm looking at the Rhode Island Department of Education regulations for school building committees, and they require.
School buildings?
And I just lost it. They do have a composition of superintendent of schools, a member of school committee, local officials responsible for building maintenance, representative of the office of the body authorized by law to construct the school buildings, a school principal, a member who has knowledge of educational mission and management of facilities, local budget officer, a member of the community with architectural, engineering, and/or construction experience.
Yeah, that's a school.
This is, that's a school.
I know, Claire, I'm saying that's the template for building committees when you're dealing with the schools, so just substitute senior citizen. But I think it's important that architectural and engineering is represented, because you might have a bad architect.
I think the purpose is, is that, you know, we can always specify a public at large that, you know, that they have a background. You know, we've gotten, you know, we look at skills and qualifications, and, you know, maybe if we have to put a member of large, that, or a person with experience appointed by the town council, but, you know, the goal, we can't have everybody be on a committee. And I think we would strongly encourage people that have those backgrounds and those experiences to put their name in, you know. We'll see what happens.
Okay.
So I made a motion for what I just said a minute ago.
All right, we may have a motion. Claire, did you second?
No, I don't know what motion is. Which one? We've changed it. Is it seven members?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, I second.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes, Claire seconded and Ray?
Absolutely.
All ready.
Twice.
Any further discussion? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Hamilton?
Absolutely.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. So Mr. Igliozzi, do you have to redo this and then we approve it, or are you all set to just?
I can, I think you can approve it and I, so that you can have it ready. You can vote to approve it and I'll submit the language, and you'll have it in front of you next meeting when you act on it. If there's some reason to modify, you can do that.
Okay.
Rather than kill another meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So you want me to make a motion for that? Do you need a motion?
No. You vote to approve it with your amendments, and I'll have it for you for next meeting.
Thank you. All right, discussion by vote, council, discussion by council, vote of other action on owner's project manager for town of North Smithfield, Mr. Ogier.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that we table this to the next meeting. So if it can be placed on the next agenda, that'd be great. The only other thing I had that, out of what made me think about some of this, was, you know, we have current building projects in place, but I would like, I know on one of the agendas, and if I need to speak later under the open forum, I will, but I know we were supposed to have grant updates related to all grants that are in front of the town right now. I know we were gonna be working on some spreadsheets, and I asked for it to be a standing item, and I know it fell off, so it's, I understand things happen. But I would like to see that added back on as well, so we can have some informed decisions and discussions going forward.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, can you please put on for the next town council agenda for a spreadsheet of all current grants?
Thanks.
Thank you. Discussion by council, vote of other action on moving North Smithfield Town Council meetings to a different night. That's under my name, but it's actually Mrs. Hamilton, so.
So stirring everything up is just what I seem to be doing, but I'm thinking logistically here. So we have people in the building on Thursday till seven o'clock, and if we needed a member of the, you know, whatever department, they would already be here. They don't have to go home, come out an extra night, gives them a little bit, you know, less of a hassle for their scheduling. Also, there are many times that we have Mondays where our, the holidays, and we have to kick it to the next day, so that would be eliminated completely. But I think mostly it's just for the convenience of having people, you know, the finance director, town clerk, and whomever who was already here, they just come downstairs and they could stay. Hopefully, we don't have very long meetings. But if they need something, they can get their files upstairs and have it be easily accessible. It's just a thought, and I, you know, I, I don't know if anybody else has any ideas on that, or?
Because you have young families, you may want a long weekend start off, and, you know, there's not enough time to do a lot of things.
I don't have young families, honey. I wish I had young families. Yeah, okay, that's good.
But, you know, flat trips, sheep around the plane, figure, I can think of everything, right?
No, I think it's great, I'm for it. The only thing, I think we just, scheduling, are we looking to do it right away, or do we need to let planning and rearrange the schedule a little bit?
Madam President, could I weigh in?
I don't know if it was a order to.
Before we get too far into this, I had a conversation with the solicitor, and it looks like Thursdays probably will not work, so.
Well, there's, there's two issues. One issue is by January of every year, the clerk's office is required to submit the list of all your meetings in advance for the year, of regular meetings. And not only does the clerk do that, but people like me set their whole year's schedule based upon those meetings. I have planning board meetings on Thursdays, so I don't have a problem, but there would be then, you know, then ultimately it would confuse matters, at least for me. If you're gonna do it, I'd like you to wait till next year, and then we'll talk to the planning board about changing their date to Mondays. If you switch with the planning board, if you switch your meetings with the planning board and the planning goes to Monday, then that's fine, but they listed all their meetings for the whole year, too. Every single committee has done that. So it's a year-by-year plan of meetings that everybody organizes, so I would encourage you strongly not to make a change tonight.
So now we know.
Not only be selfishly, but also for other people that have planned for a year.
That's why I wanted to bring it up, you know, because I can't think of everything, right? So just, I was thinking for the logistics of it. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna mention also the budget committee, that we tend to schedule most of our meetings on Thursday nights, so when they bring in the department heads to meet, most of them are already in the building as well. So, I mean, that's only springtime, but that's also a night we use as well.
So we can just, we can just revisit this at the end of the year and see if it's, if it's something that we can do.
I'd just suggest, if you're gonna do it, if you switch with the planning board, it'll work fine, other than the budget commission. The planning board will work fine, assuming the planning board doesn't have a conflict with that.
Yeah, I think overall it's probably a good idea, generally, so we can look at it another time, but just keep it on our radar. Thanks.
Discussion by council, vote of other action on no parking signs on Ridge Road. I put this on the agenda, and I don't know where my back copy is, but it's come to our attention that there's been some issues on that road with residents parking on the side, which now, that road's already narrow as it is, and then with large trucks or box trucks parking on the side of the road overnight, if they ever had to get in there with an emergency vehicle, same thing when there's church, people are lining that street, parking there. So, Chief, is there something that we can talk about, maybe looking into that road and seeing if it would be feasible to put up no parking on one side of it?
Yes, I discussed it with Mr. Jack Gas, can you move on?
Chief, I'm sorry.
Isn't it already on the books, no overnight parking? On the town of North Smithfield, it's already there.
Yes, I think if you strictly.
There's already an ordinance for overnight parking on all right sides, right sides of roads.
As long as one side is freed up, I believe there may be enough room for vehicles to pass. As far as the ordinance and the parking, I don't know, I think it does mention certain streets, but enforcement of the ordinance, it's always nice to have a sign there to, for us to enforce.
It helps us.
And to uphold that in municipal court.
Yes, Chief, it does specify specific streets.
Right.
Right.
And I don't know if Ridge Road is on that.
No, it's not.
So to make a restriction, first, of course, I know it's been in the news, an ordinance has to be drawn up, the town council passes it, signs go up, and it can be enforced.
Okay.
But I think if you restricted both sides, it would probably, wouldn't be very good for the residents that, I know there's a lot of duplexes on that, apartments and, but as far as the church, congregational church services on Sunday, we can send patrol through there. Once the signs are up and it's, it's okay by the town council, then we can take enforcement.
Okay. Do you want this? This is the actual ordinance?
What is that?
The ordinance.
Yeah, sure.
So we just have to instruct the solicitor to amend this ordinance and add Ridge Road? Is there a suggestion which side you think would better suit Ridge Road, or?
I believe if you okayed parking on this, I believe the residents in that area basically made up of the same duplexes and single-family homes on either side, I don't believe there's a preference that I can see that would make a difference.
Okay.
I was out there the other day measuring the width of the road. The area off of Green Street, closest to the church, is a major concern. It's a concern for the residents, and it's a concern for us in inclement weather. I would suggest, and I can certainly speak with the chief on this, that we have no parking on the southerly side of Ridge Road. And one of the reasons that I noticed when I was out there walking the street the other day is a fire hydrant is right on the southerly side at the corner of Ridge, right near countryway. So if you're gonna put a no parking sign, let's make sure they don't park in front of the fire hydrant.
I believe that's a violation that we might need to sign for.
So, but the lady who moved into that house.
That's why.
They should be out of there. I agree. Nice lady, her family, they just moved in there, and I was speaking with her, and she was kinda curious what I was doing with my measuring wand, and she kinda enlightened me to the congregational church people park all over her lawn every Sunday. So that was one of the other indicative things that I said, we're gonna do the southerly side. So that way there, it keeps the other side up towards North Main, you got more room to park off the side of the road. So my suggestion would be the southerly side, no parking.
And just in front of the public and the town council and yourself, Ray, anytime you get a call, or you get a call or complaint that someone's parking on personal property, even if it's a congregational church service, 'cause we've had the same complaints at church in St. Paul and St. Paul Street, and Ms. O'Hara is very well-versed in parking complaints during the football games at Barry Field. So just make a phone call and we'll go there, we can have the pastor make an announcement, and just advise those people, have the pastor, we can nip it in the bud and speak to the pastor and say, just advise your congregation, you know, to be, not to park on people's property.
So Chief, while you're there, I mean, we're talking about the no parking, but what about the commercial vehicles overnight? Is there an ordinance about commercial vehicles parking?
On Ridge Road.
Well, on any road overnight, is there anything?
I'd have to look into it. I know we've gotten complaints of car, trucks parking, waiting to go to CVS with the cars running. We've addressed those issues. There's no parking signs on Industrial Drive now. As far as parking overnight in any streets, I haven't heard or seen a complaint, so I don't know if that's a ordinance that you can't park any tractor truck. We get those complaints on a, on a basis that, we had complaints at Stop and Child Parking Lot, there's business hours they can operate, there's certain noises on refrigeration trucks that park there. Most of the complaints have come from Industrial Drive, with cars, trucks parking, waiting to get into CVS. So if trucks are started, if some trucks that enter onto properties that are from subcontractors that the, up the commercial business or retail business isn't in operation, you know, it's usually a courtesy knock, you know, can you shut your rig off? Or, we don't get it, we get them seldom, the biggest complaints, largest amounts of complaints we got were on Industrial Drive, heading into CVS.
Okay, thank you. So we would have to make a motion to amend this resolution?
Madam President, we, I would present you a proposed ordinance amendment at the next meeting, first reading.
Okay.
Then continue it to another meeting, where you have a public hearing on this, and then second reading, assuming the public hearing is concluded at that time. So it's the same process that we just talked about earlier, so I'll present that to you. I got the notes, southerly side of Ridge Road.
Okay. Okay.
That's the entire road.
Okay. So do you need a motion for that, or?
You can make a motion, Director, if you would.
Okay. Okay. Did anyone want to make a motion to amend?
It's not to amend it, it's to.
To have me draft an ordinance for first reading.
Draft an ordinance for the first reading for no parking on the southerly side of Ridge Road?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote or other action on consideration of implementation of a Homestead Act for senior citizens meeting specified criteria. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I've been getting calls from various people in town, wondering about a Homestead Act. One Socket has one, I think Lincoln Cumberland. We decide on guidelines, One Sockets are a little more lenient than others. But an example, if you're sixty years of old, years old, and you live in your house, this is your main place, you can have a place in Florida, but you can't qualify there under the Homestead Act, that you get a percentage reduction in your taxes. It varies, usually a one-family, One Socket has one family, it's twenty-five percent. Two-family, it's fifteen percent. And then I, she wasn't sure if multiple dwellings. I think anything more, they don't qualify. It would help seniors, right now, the way everything's going up, stay in their own home. How would we benefit? A house isn't sold. Usually, if they're going to buy, they're going to have kids coming in. And many seniors, if they could, prefer living in their own home. Now, if you have a condo, you're the owner of that condo, and that would qualify as well, as long as you meet the guidelines. And I, they weren't sure in Burrville, but I know Lincoln Cumberland has them. It would help. And, you know, the state's done a lot to help people maintain their land in this state. If you own acreage and you don't develop it, your assessment is a lot cheaper. And when you do sell it, you don't have to make up the difference with the town or anybody else. If we could get something like this, I'll try to get in writing, I just called Citizens and Towns, and most were very cooperative about it. So I, I think it would help seniors tremendously. Five hundred, the way things are now, if they need it, let them just about pay for one month. So I'd like you to think about it. I, I figured, I think it's sixty-eight and a half to get full benefits from Social Security, I think. And years, One Sockets, it's only two. I propose seven years and living in town at least fifteen of those years. And like One Socket, we can decide the twenty-five percent for one, and you have to have verification that your kids aren't living in the house. You must reside there. You know, it's not something that we have to jump into right now, but a lot of people are close to losing their homes. If you're on One Socket water, that water bill went way up, and I'm only one percent. And with the electric, that's doubled, it's going to be really tough. So I'd like you to think about it. And guidelines have to be met, and if they try to fool us, they'll be paying everything back. That'll be put into it as well. Anybody have a comment on that?
I think, I think we should be looking at taxes. I know when I was on the council the first time, I also agreed that we should be looking at tax rates from time to time, you know. I know the last council helped veterans. I think it's important, if we can do it, to help seniors. I think before we, I think there's more, I'd like to learn more of the qualifications that you're thinking about, how people will, you know, be eligible for this program. But I also think that, you know, we have a lot of huge construction projects coming on the pike, or down the pike, at least the police station, just based on the numbers that we heard. And, you know, depending on if there's any overages for scouters, we don't know what the true cost might, what that looks like. We just know that we have the grant for four million. So I think, I agree, I think knowing kind of what the qualifications are, maybe the budget committee can take a look at some point, or the finance department can take a look and look at if there's going to be any significant drop in town revenues from taxes, and then maybe trying to think of a phased approach, if it is the direction that the council looks to move in, and saying, you know, what is that, do you get to a certain percentages over a certain period of years? But yeah, before, I just think I would need to know a little bit more.
Absolutely, but I figured that's.
Because every town's different, you know, One Sockets is a little bit different, and, and on makeup, and Burrville's a little bit different, and East Greenwich is a little bit, so all these other communities are different. So I think just know more of the qualifications and the impact would be helpful.
Okay. And then just, just to piggyback on that, too, I think almost every meeting we come back, and it kind of goes full circle, that it comes back to that three-to-five-year, you know, projection, and, you know, depreciation, and what kind of new business could be coming to town. I, I just think that almost every meeting is another reason why we, we need to start really doing that and, and living by it, as well as with the, with the budget committee. So it's just another reason to say how much we need to have that, that done yearly.
And there's one other thing, I'd really, I'll see if I can find out through the state. The state has a lot of programs that, especially DEM, that they get, if you don't, if you have land, you just leave it natural, you get a different assessment on that land. And it's a big difference. Let's say it's worth a hundred eighty thousand, and you're going to pay like two thousand six hundred? And who's losing? We're losing. The town is losing. The state isn't making that up to us, are they? To my knowledge, they're not. So think about it. And there's a lot of acreage out there, and, and people, and you don't hear much about the, the lowering of assessments, that the, with different programs, especially when it involves land usage. So maybe we should look in that, maybe if the state is going to make these things, let them make up the difference to the town. I don't know if they do it now, but it's always the first time.
I think on that, I think we could always propose a resolution to the state assembly to ask them to look at changing some, if there's something specific in mind. I know it kind of gives them a little bit of a push to say that, you know, that it's the action that's needed for them to take action, so that's always an option, too, that, you know, we could look at.
Thank you.
All right, the last item is open forum for agenda items only. Anyone like to speak? Could you? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Vaden, that seat is yours.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept the audit report?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Did you get that, Tammy? Are you all set? It was just a motion to accept the audit report. So DJ, you made that motion, right? And Paulette, seconded. I just need to go back to, I was supposed to read this in for Jeff Porter, so I just want to put this on the record for open forum. So it says, Dear President Als, Vice President Oger, and Madam Clerk, while I cannot attend Tuesday's, Tuesday evening's meeting, I would respectfully request that this letter be read into record during the first portion of public forum under Agenda Item Three and shared with the council. After attending multiple meetings, hearing that the hollow well school buildings need to be demolished before anything else can occur, I would like to encourage the council to consider adding on the funds for demolition and abatement into the potential bond for the police station that has been discussed. The materials, the materials the planning board has received for the capital improvements review show that the DPW is requesting four hundred thousand for this fiscal year 2023-24, and another four hundred thousand for the next fiscal year 24-25. This greatly concerns me, as the demolition would then not be scheduled to occur until summer of '24. The Hollowell Review Committee recommended back in December of '21 that the buildings be abated and demolished expeditiously, acknowledging that there is a liability to the town by leaving them untouched. The DPW director has estimated that the demolition and abatement will be approximately 1.2 million, a third of which lay with abatement costs according to the cost estimate from ECM dated February 28, 2022, for abatement, attached for reference. It will cost approximately 362,000. ECM estimated 271,710 plus 20% for contingency, of which could be subtracted from the remaining school bond of 384,000 and/or the 66,276 that are in reserve, referred to DPW capital budget request form. I would highly recommend that the town move forward immediately with abatement, as the approved Rhode Island DEM plan is set to expire on April 6 of this year, thus leaving about 800,000 to take care of the demolition. If we continue to wait for funding to be allocated through the capital improvements process, we will wait another year and a half before anything happens at the property, which is another year and a half for something to happen in the town to be held liable. If the town goes out for the 20 million bond, 800,000 would amount to 4% of that bond total. I would encourage the council to look at a faster way to fund the demolition of the building, so that the town will not be left holding the bag for negligence and for failing to secure the property. If a bond amount is to be decided this evening, and a special election is to be held in June, what better timing to add this to the town's building projects and finally take care of the liability? The additional funding could be appropriately earmarked for the building demolition, and we can all put this to bed. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you all at the March 6 council meeting. If you could also please confirm receipt, I would greatly appreciate it. Jeff Porter, Six Country Way. So no one for open forum? Oh, that's blocked, no.
Ray Penninghouse, Public Works Director. In response to that letter from Mr. Porter, all due respect to myself and the planning board, I have a presentation to make Thursday evening regarding that. Mr. Oger made a very good point this evening with the surplus that funds possibly could be used in that. I think we're jumping ahead a little bit. I need, I need to make my presentation Thursday evening to the planning board for capital, and then I have a budget process that I'm going to address. So I, I think, I think I have a pretty good handle on this. I, I think we just need to take a deep breath and let the process play out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on the proposal that you look at, the Homestead exemption for seniors. I think Mrs. O'Hara, a couple of years ago, about two years ago, or four years ago, when Mr. Zelsky was reducing the tangible tax, you may have taken and said, oh, I wish we could bring it down to zero today, just do it one swoop. Every person in this town would have had to move out of here if we had done that. So I don't think you can just shoot from the hip like that and come up with an idea. It's disastrous. So, and again.
It's a beginning.
I'm going to go back, no, I'm going.
Okay, can we not go back and forth, please?
The other thing is, in the past, I've spoken about the exemptions of the elderly, and I've also argued that it should be need-based, as was, and we made the same argument for the veterans. You're worried about the more people who are going to lose their homes. There's no reason to give it to a doctor, or lawyer, or somebody who's sitting on, you know, six-figure bank accounts. So I, and I'd ask you to first, before you even look at doing anything like that, get a printout from the tax assessor as to how many people in town are paying property taxes, how many get exemptions now, and what's the value of those exemptions. Because you've got a big part of the population that's getting exemptions, and then you've got a smaller population of middle-aged people who don't have any service background, and don't, aren't seniors, and they're not getting any exemptions. So they're paying a bigger percentage of the operation of this town already. So every time you add on a gift to someone else, their backs are going to get broken. So let's look at how we're doing this, and do it equity, please.
Can I say? I can't respond to this, can I? Can I? Can I respond to this?
I mean.
Very, very nicely. Just because some people have worked hard all their lives, live moderately, have a few bucks, why shouldn't they get anything? I didn't ask you tremendously.
I'm sorry, we, no. All right.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right, so the next item is executive session. A discussion by council vote or other action on Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One leaded Peza and Constance Peza in Material Standard Stone Corp versus Town in North Smithfield, Case 99-1811. Material Standard Stone Corp and C. Peza and Sun Inc. versus Town in North Smithfield, Case 91-5374. Potential litigation and collective bargaining.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, go on.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I think so.